This meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all, please be seated and welcome to the June 2025 school board meeting. Just a couple of weeks away from having a half of a year going already. So, okay. Let the record reflect that all board members are present tonight. And are there any visitors? Are you a visitor? No, okay. My hearing aid just went out, so we'll see how this works. All right, we'll jump right into the consent agenda. We had a bunch of listening moments last week or month, so we'll keep moving. We have the May 20th regular board meeting minutes. We have the treasurer's report for May of 2025. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Thank you, sir. Gross wages for May the 9th, 2025, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and ten cents. Gross wages on May 23rd, 2025, for eight hundred and forty-two dollars, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. For claims pre-pays on May the 1st, 2025, through May 31st, 2025, for one million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and two cents. For claims regular vouchers for six seventeen, 2025, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and eighty-five, seven cents, for grand total of three million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Durnall. Then we have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations. That is C 1 through 35. And D personnel appointments and transfers, 1 through 57. And then we have out of state and overnight field trips, E 1 through 7. And these are all of the normal high school and junior high athletic camps. So that's what those are. So do we have a motion?
I approve it.
Good and accepted, and discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Sanders.
Yes, we have, obviously, if you looked at the agenda, we have a long list of new teachers. And it's exciting to see there's several on here for the new E E C C, the expansion of that building. And so we're very excited to have those folks present tonight. We have some teachers who are present here tonight. And so I'm going to call on the principals to introduce their new folks that are here. So let Brenda come up.
So I'll introduce both of ours? Yes. Well, we are very happy to share tonight our new assistant principal at Edgewood Primary School, Alisa Van Duzen. And she comes with a very well-rounded background. She's had 14 years in the classroom, and many of those years have been in first and second grade with a touch of fifth grade, so that's good. And then she's been a Title I reading specialist for the last few years and an intervention coordinator, as well as an assistant to the principal. So she's got some solid experience. She's been in the building already. She's met a few teachers, and she's seen her new office. But now it's all been cleaned out. So the key is on my desk. Come and get it, and you can move in. You can move in tomorrow. And then we also are happy to have Maitland join us for good. She's been with us actually for the past year. She started out as a student teacher, moved into an instructional assistant position, and then became our long-term sub. Now, in the process of all that, she's had a baby, she's lived through a flood, she's lived through all kinds of things this year, and has hardly missed a beat. And so when a kindergarten position opened up, we were just happy that we were able to offer that to her, and she accepted. So Maitland, welcome. It's good to have you.
Excited to have you both with us. Glad you could make it tonight, too.
Lisa's going to be a great instructional leader. She has so many experiences. She has a dual license in English language learners, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's going to be a big help. All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Siglin to come up.
Why, it's always, Brenda's the hardest person to follow because she always has these super-long introductions and knows everything about everybody. But we are excited. One of our new teachers, our seventh-grade science teacher, Pen Pen Ping, is here to join us, moving here from Louisiana, right? To Bloomington, and she will be our seventh-grade science teacher this year, so.
Good to have you.
Welcome, yes.
And then Mr. Ackerman.
We got her at Edgewood High School. We won. We have Shonda Klinger. Shonda has taught for a long time at Owen Valley Middle School. We have all, like, every time we have a special education opening, we all try to recruit her, and we got her coming this way, and we're really excited. So it's been a great day. I'm sorry, I'm a little giddy. Hired a new math teacher, new English teacher. I haven't hired this many teachers in a long time. And Shonda was just the first of a few home runs that we've hit for the high school. So really excited to have Shonda at the high school. She will be there. She missed Jackson, her oldest son, but she'll be there for Ryan, and I know that he's going to enjoy having mom around as well. So Shonda Klinger.
I just put two and two together. I'm known for her for two. Welcome aboard, glad you're here.
And those boys.
Good, good.
Those boys are, they're smart.
Yeah.
So a little quick story about Jackson. You know, we were already impressed with Jackson because of what he did in the, with the coffee shop. And I couldn't make it to his open house, so Matt and I took him out to lunch. And he proceeds to tell me that he has this other business that he started on his own. It has to do with shoes. And, I mean, it's just remarkable how he is able to use his, the technology, to buy the shoes at a low price, and then he sells them. And that's his student-run business on his own. And then, I just got to tell this because it's just so exciting, but his 10th birthday, 10 years old, Jackson took his money from, that he got for his birthday, invested it in stocks. Yeah, so.
Didn't think he was impressive before the lunch, after the lunch, that's all we talked about on the way back.
I think I need to meet with him.
Like, I mean, he just puts money in, he sells, he buys, he goes back to the yard. It's amazing what that kid can do.
So much intelligence, and even Mr. Durnall put two and two together.
All right, I think that's all for me.
Now we'll move on to the assistant superintendent's report.
Did you guys already vote on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, you guys have the cash flows there in front of you. Starting with the education fund, revenue projections for the month of May were very accurate. Expenses came in slightly higher. One of the main factors that we, as we paid our deductible on, we have multiple students that are in outside residential placements. So we have to pay our deductible on that before SEEK picks up the remaining costs. So that was a, an increase to what we had expected in claims, and that was something that just ended up hitting this month. The other thing, made some changes to, so the state made some changes to On My Way Pre-K funding. It was cut back significantly, so the reimbursement rate is less than 50% of what it used to be for a program that's eligible to receive that funding. That's, that's something that will definitely be a hit to us as far as expected revenue for the preschool, as well as they're limiting the number of people that are actually going to be eligible to receive it. They're capping it at 2,500 people, based on, on the way that the budget was set up. So Heather and I have worked on that, trying to update kind of where we are on enrollment projections as far as this far into it, how many we think might be eligible for On My Way Pre-K. Remember, we have everyone apply at the beginning of the application process, just because it's beneficial to the parents. And in this case, it's not necessarily going to benefit us, so to speak, because the reimbursement rate doesn't even equal up to what the actual cost of enrollment is. But it's going to be a huge benefit to any family that might be eligible for it and would be, you know, accepted. So we'll see how that goes. That does, that does negatively impact our projections. So I took down those projections on preschool revenue by about 15K a month for the rest of this year. And then we'll make adjustments in '26 and those sorts of things. But overall, with all of these things in mind, it, cash balance looks a little different from last time. But again, we're still, we're still showing that we're going to eat in some cash. And really, the, the general guidance on this is not much different than what it's been. We're in a great place with cash balance. We can strategically look at how we want to, to move with, with cash balances over the next, you know, year or so, as we navigate the changes with the legislative session and, and what we want to do with our employee pay and benefits and all those things. So we'll just continue to be cognizant of that as we, you know, make staffing decisions and all those pieces. So move over to the debt service fund. There was revenue in the debt service fund in May. It was reimbursement of funds that accrued when we made our payments on a bond obligation that has since been paid off. It was the 2009 bond obligation that's now been paid off. And so when we make our payments, the trustee bank invests those funds for a period of time until they release those dollars out to the people that purchased our bonds. And during that time, it accrues interest. And so at the, at the closure of that, then they pull that money back to us, checked with Jacob McCollum for Bose on, on the appropriate place to receive that back into, which is our debt service fund. So that's where you see that, that come back into the fund. And then other. Say what?
Which amount is that?
That would be the, I'm going to pull it up here in front of me. That would be the $2,680 that you see in other revenue on the debt service fund for the month of May. But yeah, that's, that was a, that was, and then we paid a small trustee fee. Everything else is normal as expected. We'll, we'll make some payments on some bond obligations in the month of June. We'll make the rest of them for that, for that first round in July, as normal. You'll see that on the cash flows, and everything's in good shape there. Operations fund, staying pretty steady. I layered in the daycare costs in and just trying to look at where we are as far as what we've committed to as far as hiring staff, and then what we think we'll have as far as revenue goes, based on the people that have said that they're interested or they're going to need that daycare option for our staff. So we've layered, layered that into the revenue and expenses. We, we have only hired up to this point based on what we think we need. We're not going to hire everybody if we don't need everybody at this point, just again, it's meant to run it as an almost at-cost option. And so we want to be mindful of what the demand is versus how much staffing we have, as well as just making sure that we're meeting the expectations as far as student-to-staff ratios. And then other than that, we're, we're sitting in a great place in the operations fund. Things have stayed steady. I just continue to remind you, during the summer months, technology, maintenance, custodial crews, there's a lot happening around campus, and they're working hard just for summer upkeep, improvements, all the different things to get ready for the next school year. And so that stuff is, is actively going on and going well. So I appreciate their efforts. And with that, I'll take any questions on cash flows.
One quick question on the, first thing you said out of the gate, the multiple students in residential placement. How many kids are we talking about?
We have two students.
In ballpark, what's our cost on that?
One of them, the monthly cost is about 18 grand or so. The other one's north of 60,000 per month. And so right now, if you.
Time out, 70,000 a month?
Six, over 60,000 a month for one, because of the needs of the child that's in the placement, in the facility. And so they, that is one where we have to, we put the application into SEEK for excess cost funding through the state, and we have to pay a deductible on that each fiscal year. So this year, it was a little north of 28,000 that we had to pay a deductible on in order for SEEK to pick up the remaining costs. And then that, that is a reimbursement. So you guys look in the fund report, there's a specific fund as it relates to SEEK, and you'll see that functions much like any other grant where it's a reimbursable. You'll see that in a negative, and then we send in the reimbursements, they send it in, and eventually it equalizes itself out at the completion of each fiscal year. And then.
So what's our net cost then?
Net cost, if SEEK picks it up, it's the cost of our deductible, which is 28, a little bit north of 28,000. If SEEK weren't to pick it.
Annually, annually.
Annually, annually.
Okay.
If SEEK did not pick it up, then we would be on the hook for all of it. And so that would be something that would be a huge expense.
Okay, okay. If somebody transfers in from another school corporation, because they couldn't provide the services, they should have provided the services, correct? That's their responsibility if they came from another corporation.
So if it's a public school that's accepting a student with different needs, yeah, I would assume that they're, they're then responsible for, for meeting the needs of that child, depending on whatever's been, you know, agreed upon in a case conference committee for a student with an IEP. So these are students that have an IEP in place.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Move on, we have the school construction report, and we have Martin Truist, who is coming with us here tonight to walk us through an update.
All right, I'll try to get this pulled up on the screen while Martin makes his way up. That screen over there. I can't read it because of the glare.
P S V Z 3.
Okay. Martin, I'll let you take it away.
All right, I think what I'd like to do today is we've got the board package here. Matt, I think that's available to the board, the package?
Talking about this?
Yeah.
I, I can email it to them.
I think I'd like to talk about kind of some highlights of what are going on in the next couple of weeks. So starting with the early childhood center. Adjusted the timeline just a little bit because we're actually doing it in 15 months, not 18 months, so. Early childhood center, we've got the exterior pretty well done. You can see the green metal panels. My sense is probably a lot of you have seen that in person. But rather than go through all the little items on last 60 and next 60, if it's all right with you all, I'd kind of like to just talk about what we're really driving on. The thing we need to get, and as we go through it, you'll see some pictures of, of the kitchen. We're really pushing on the kitchen. The reason we're doing that is we need to get a board of health inspection before it can be used, and we also need to have Vicki, right, get it stocked and ready to go. So what, right now, we have the kitchen equipment installed. And Matt, you might flip another couple pages. So all the kitchen equipment's onsite, it's installed, we're doing just some minor stuff and some cleanup. We're doing cleanup this week. What we want to do is the first week of July, get the board of health in there to look at it. It's not unusual for them to have a few things to, to touch up, and that would give us a couple of weeks to do that. And we're hoping by no later than July 21st, have that where it can be stocked and start using it. And again, if we do that the first week of July, that will give us three weeks to, to make that happen. We're hitting flooring real hard next week, and we ought to have a lot, lot of the administration in, in those type of areas. Ceiling pads, we're dropping in ceiling pads right now. Jump to the administration in the clinic. I believe we've got Matt Furniture coming on July 15th, if I'm correct on that.
Yeah, furniture delivery install, yeah.
So what, what our goal is to have the administration and clinic set up by July 21st, and I'm getting way off our, our PowerPoint here. But if we have that by July 21st set up, then Heather and her staff can get in there and get themselves going. And again, as I think everybody's aware, we're really pushing the early childhood. We've condensed it to a pretty short window, and I think we're going to make it. Teachers, we're saying they're going to be in there on the 28th, and we'll be able to set up their classrooms. That only really gives them one week, but we need to get it done and get cleaned before they move in. Paving will be done yet this month, but a lot of the landscape, and, and we're putting sod in up next to the building. So from the parking lot, it's going to look done, because we'll have sod up there. But the fall planting season doesn't really start till, I think it's August 15th. So any turf out in the, the swale or around the north side of the building where it's seeded, that, that'll get seeded probably that first couple, or second couple of weeks of August. And you're really not going to see the turf coming up until September, October. What else have we got? Okay. And then the, the other thing that's, that we're pushing is the playground. Playground, what we want to do is get all the paving and all that kind of stuff done so they can get around the north side of the building. And again, I'm way off of the, the program here, but the playground should be installed early July. They're waiting for a couple of, of events for that, and then they'll move, move into that. Again, not to spend a lot of time on this piece, but I don't know if you want to look at some of the pretty pictures we have, if we could do that. And I, I guess with that, are there any questions on the early childhood?
No, just confident we're going to get it in on time, right?
I, at this point, we feel pretty good about it.
Good.
Yeah, we're, we're at the point where weather really doesn't impact us much. We've got, there are five mechanical units, rooftop units that do the air conditioning for the building. We've got three of them running right now, so that whole classroom wing is under condition. Now, what that means is, the units are running, we don't have the controls, the computer controls, up and running yet, so they, they're just manually turning it on and off as they need it. It's important to have that done because that case work is subject to humidity, as are the ceilings. So we've got that all under control. On the west side of the building, what we call in Unit A, the two units are not running yet, but they should be running next week. So right now, we're running portable dehumidification in there.
You guys hitting on, it's up here Saturday, there were, there's probably 15 people that are working Saturday. Are you working on Sundays, too?
I'm not.
You're not? I know, I didn't, I haven't seen you ever on the weekend, but I don't, I, I was just, they were getting after it pretty hard on Saturday.
I, I tell you what, Dale is pushing them like crazy out here. He's making it happen.
All right.
I haven't seen anybody there on Sunday. You're right, Saturday.
Yeah, they have, yeah.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of days between now and the first weekday.
I know.
Anyway, I thought that was more valuable than running piece by piece. High school, Matt, you might flip into that, obviously. We're working on the outside. You can see our little red brick pier, which I think the next slide is a close-up of that. Up, site work, we've not been doing a lot of site work the last 60 days. We're working on the grease interceptor on the building, and I, I've kind of let you guys look at that rather than go through it item by item. And you might flip to the next one, Matt. There's our red brick pier on the south side of the building. That kind of works with the red brick on the north side of your building to try to tie it all together. That looks a little green in the slide, but you can see the, even though they're both green, the, the color of the concrete panels kind of work with the color of the limestone. And with that red separating them, I think it, it makes it work. The next 30 days, we'll complete the metal panels. We're going to install the athletic equipment. And let me look at my notes here. We have, we're starting to install the, the equipment now. We need to get the air conditioning going before we do the floor, which should be in the next couple of weeks. But the floor will go in in late July. Now, just a reminder, the, the field house was never scheduled to be done by, by fall term. We've got that scheduled in, in our, as bid schedule is being done in September, and we might beat that. We might be able to get it done sometime in August. No promises, but we're pushing toward that. Kitchen, there's the chaos of the kitchen. Whole lot of block work, that, that used to be your auxiliary gym. You can see on the one side is a block, the other side is block, plus the ductwork for your, your hoods for your kitchen. Kitchen, again, we were pushing to see how quickly we could get it, but what we've essentially done is said, go to the early childhood, get that kitchen done. We're real close to where we could have the kitchen done before fall, fall term, but to get it in and get it, board of health through it and all that kind of stuff, that's not going to happen. So we've talked to your food service people. They're going to work out of the existing kitchen, at least for the few, first few weeks going into fall term. And then, as we get that kitchen done, they can kind of evolve over to the new kitchen from that. We're trying to get the floor done in the cafeteria. We're definitely going to get it painted before school. We're going to get as far as we can with the floor. And Matt, I think Dale may have talked to, to you and Jerry. It may be something that you may need to, you may be working off a concrete floor in there for some period of time as we go into the fall. But we'll do it in such a way that we can get in there and kind of give you part and work on part. And then the last thing we'll do is get into the existing kitchen and take it down. One change we made, excuse me, in the choir room, it had existing concrete risers. Those were originally called to be removed. After discussion with the high school staff, they decided they did not want them removed. So that saved us a little time. So we're working on that. And the band room, that whole area, Phase 8 of the high school is on schedule. So we expect that to be done by the time school starts. And then I'll just put that one little slide, the, the discus area off of the high school football stadium is in process right now. Again, don't expect to have good grass in there until at least spring and probably next fall, quite frankly. So at, at your leisure, you can kind of go through that. Primary school, a big push on the primary school. We did not want to, we did not want to do toilet rooms during the school year, so we're doing all of the toilet rooms during the summer. And we think we're going to be done, we're on schedule to be done. But we're thinking one of them is right on the cusp. So you'll definitely have all but one. The one may, by the time we get all the tile, well, actually, the toilet part is in, we may be looking at the first or second week of school, but you should have all the rest of it. Other than that, in the primary school, we've been sticking right to the schedule. The classrooms will be turned over on schedule. And I guess if there are any other questions on the primary school. And you can see us, our contractors in there knocking the heck out of the toilet rooms and trying to get them done as quickly as we can. Intermediate school, everything's just, there's not a lot to talk about. Everything's on schedule. It's moving along nicely. on schedule, um, it's moving along nicely. Uh, one thing that's a little different than what we've looked at before is we're getting into the library and there's a, the media center, and then there's a classroom right off of the media center. Um, so that, on the left is the media center, on the right is that classroom. They're moving along nicely and should be ready by the time school starts. And with that, anything else on the intermediate school? I know I've gotten off the track of, of the PowerPoint, but, um, again, if Matt can get that to you, you can look at it at your leisure and it'll get down more to the nitty gritty. But, um, right now, intermediate school looks very good, primary school, we're trying to get all the toilet rooms done, um, we'll have them all done at least except one. And the, the, um, early childhood looks good. The, the turf and grass and bushes won't be done. Um, the other thing we're looking at, I think, is signage. We should have the building signage, um, the interior room signage. If we have to put temporary signage up, we will.
Just as a reminder, we're taking, the board's taking a tour of the construction projects tomorrow night, meet here at five thirty. That's exciting.
What's that big old hole? When I came in, then I parked up by the baseball field and because it was all gated off, what's that big hole for? Between the activity center and, are they putting pipes still or are they going to pave?
You know, I didn't see the hole, what we're doing.
You're talking about up by the, the field house area?
Yeah, it's like, I get my directions between.
Probably the grease interceptors and/or the drainage, they're probably connecting drainage.
I just don't know if they're going to repave all, I assume that's, we're just going to have to repave it, it's.
Oh yeah, it's got to be repaved. One thing, um, and I'm kind of looking at Matt, but I think there's a little discussion on whether, we had talked about reducing that width of sidewalk in order to make the road a little wider. Um, in order to do that, we've got to procure some additional storm structures.
Just waiting on engineer on that.
We're waiting on the engineer on that. Um, if we go ahead with it per the original plans, the structures are already in and they can just get the sidewalks in and get it paved. So I'm not real sure, Matt, where we are with that.
Okay.
Just waiting on the engineer.
Still looking to, to widen the.
Yeah, just trying to, trying to get a clarification of whether or not it's a different type of grate that would make the intersection a little wider and not affect the storm structure. So they're supposed to be giving us an answer on that so that we know how to proceed with it, so they can make sure this thing stays on time.
So that's still a four-way stop right there?
Yeah, it's, yeah, three, yeah, three-way stop. Yeah, that's right there, yeah.
Okay, all right.
But what, what, until we get those, if, if we go forward and, and narrow the sidewalk and widen the street, um, then we will have to have new storm structures and the structures, the, the manhole essentially.
Right, right.
Um, and it will take a few weeks to get those structures. So we're trying to move forward with the paving in the next several weeks, but if we have to change the structures, that'll, there'll be some things on the west side of the parking lot that won't be done concurrently with the rest of the paving.
Okay. Thank you very much, Martin, appreciate your.
Absolutely.
Helping, looking forward to seeing it tomorrow.
I think you'll see.
I'm sorry?
I think you'll see Dale tomorrow.
Well, I said, see it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You don't, you don't want to come back for another evening?
Do what?
You don't want to come back for another evening?
I don't know, are we back here on Thursday?
Friday, you're here Friday morning.
Friday.
Yeah.
With that, I'm going to get out of here while we're still.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it, thanks, Martin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
Appreciate it.
Now, as we complete some projects, let's have a discussion about twenty twenty-five bonds timeline. Mr. Irwin, you'd like to intro?
Yeah, so I'll kind of just, kind of queue up who's here and what, you know, we've been having discussions about possible projects. We've had multiple work sessions at this point to discuss some of the various needs of the school corporation, as well as to look at kind of what, um, our financial outlook is and, and what our, our, our possibilities are for this upcoming year and some of those projects. Uh, so here tonight is Matt Schumaker from Stiefel, who has, who's been at the work session, has presented some of this information to you previously, so some of this, all of it should be a review for you in that way, uh, but he's going to continue to touch on those things. And then again, just presenting it in a board meeting so that people in the public can continue to see that information and we're, we're making sure that we're, we're putting that thing, that out there to everyone. And then Jacob McClellan from Bose McKinney, our bond counsel, is going to talk through the, the proposed timeline and what that would look like and, and walk you through all those pieces. But I know you're all well versed in this, uh, but that's who's here tonight. So we'll start with, uh, Matt Schumaker from Stiefel.
Good evening, good to see you all again. Um, so I'll be brief tonight, I know we've been over some of this before, um, but this page looks at all of your outstanding debt as of today, color coded by issue, um, so all the payments stack on top of each other to show you what your annual payment is, not only in two thousand and twenty-five, but moving forward all the way through two thousand and forty-two. Um, obviously, this has been done intentionally, um, always with an eye to the future to make sure as we're doing these projects, we're doing them under your, your financial goals. So two thousand and twenty-five, you can see total payments are about, uh, ten million, just under ten million dollars. Scheduled to drop in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then again in two thousand and twenty-eight. Obviously, that was intentional so that we can add on projects such as these and again, hit, hit, uh, hit the goals that you've set for. So as we look at the next page, um, so we have put in a potential forty million dollar bond issue. As of today, we've shown all of this being issued at once, we know that's not going to happen. Um, obviously, these projects are most likely going to, going to take, uh, months and months, if not over the course of a couple of years. Uh, but we've done it this way to be most conservative. If you issue everything at one time, you're going to start paying interest on everything at one time. So this picture should be worst-case scenario. As you guys decide exactly how and when you want to do some of these projects, um, if you break this up into, into smaller bond issues over a period of time, that's going to make this chart look a lot better. You're not paying interest on everything right away, so you're saving some interest costs. Also, you can only pay these bonds back over a course of twenty years. So if you end up issuing these bonds, say, over the next two or three years, you get twenty years on each issue, so that can be extended out. All of this picture's going to look a lot better. The reason I've done it this way is simply to show you that you can keep your levy the same moving forward if you choose, under any circumstance, if you're talking about a forty million dollar bond issue. Um, as we've talked about in the past, the tax rate is somewhat up in the air because we don't know the full effects of, of the new legislation, but what we do know is this can be structured so that the levy, the amount of property taxes we're asking taxpayers to pay, remains constant moving forward if that's what the school board administration decides to do. So I think my message is fairly simple in that we could, we can do this under the worst circumstance, um, however you guys end up breaking this up is only going to make this look better. But in either scenario, uh, if you want to keep those property tax dollars, that levy, um, the same moving forward, that can certainly be accomplished with the size of a project. Questions about any of, any of this?
Do you have, do you have a, can you send a chart at thirty million too?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, anything, yeah. What we try to do is we try to set it at the highest amount so we could just.
Right, I get that.
And then anything you want to do that's, that's less than that, obviously will make all of this look, um, better. So yeah, we can run this in any, any number you want.
But if we get, and if we get approved for thirty, then we could spread it out over two different years.
Spread it out over whatever period you want to spread it out.
Yeah. We could, we could authorize a series, we could spread it out over five.
And then keep it at.
We could issue five different lines.
Then keep the level under the seventy cents that they voted on this year on our debt service. That's kind of what I'm.
Moving down the road, I'm unlikely, it's still to be seen how much.
But if we have them, if we have them.
This keeps us away from the seventy cents.
From doing it, yeah.
So we're authorizing it now while we're not under, we're not at the seventy cents mark. This allows us to put the authorizations and the limits and guardrails in place. And then from there, the school corporation can decide how they want to issue that forty million once it's authorized. We're setting those parameters, just like in previous bond issuances, we said, hey, we're going to authorize up to this amount while it still fits within the, the goals and the constraints that the board has set forth that they want. This is that same sort of idea, he's just saying this would be a, a parameter that we could go with and it's still fit with what we need and doing it in multiple issuances, keeping the flexibility and seeing those cliffs and those jump offs, which are important to maintain flexibility for the school corporation so that when needs arise or when changes happen legislatively, we have the ability to react to that.
Right.
Yeah, and in a perfect world, these are structured, and we're going to have to see the data over the next few years too, because we're still.
Right, yeah.
But the idea would be to structure these in a way that when these projects are complete and you've spent this money, that we can get back under the seventy cents again in the future. The, I think the beauty of, of this is it just gives you full flexibility. If, if, if you pass, decide forty million is the number and we get some bad data two years down the road, you, you don't have to issue all forty, right? This is not all or none. You can just issue any number up, up to that, and then you'll retain that authorization for as long as you want.
Retention of the authorization is what I would propose.
Correct.
In case things change and you guys need to do.
If it starts to sneak up.
So you don't move to immediately to a referendum.
Right.
Let's just say something happens and you needed to move right away and you're over seven cents.
Right.
No fault of your own because of what the legislature did, then you have that, if you have that authorization, you have a bill.
Right.
So that, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and that authorization sticks, I mean, there are plenty of schools that'll do this and they won't, they'll issue it over three, five, seven years. The timing and the amounts are totally up to the school board and the administration on how you want to do that.
If we do it correct, if we do it correctly, then we won't have to do the referendum.
That's, that is the ultimate goal, yes. Now, do they change the goalposts again to where?
I know, I know.
Then, then as of today, that is the goal, yes.
Okay.
So right now, we're looking at Friday, the meeting we talked about earlier, uh, that we're going to have on Friday is actually, uh, taking some of the projects that we've prioritized.
Right.
And we've given you estimated costs. We want to, uh, be much more precise in that. And then once we have that finished, then we'll come back to you and, and then as a board, you'll be able to prioritize and say, well, uh, these two projects need to be done sooner rather than later, and then we'll see how much those costs are, and we would bond for that amount. And then we, we could kind of map out then over the next several years, uh, each of those prioritized, uh, projects.
I think it's important to note too that by maintaining the tax levy and having a drop from twenty-seven to twenty-eight gives even more flexibility for the future, plus it gives, you know, as, as needs may change, three years down the road, four years down the road, five years down the road, we can quickly adapt to that.
Right.
So if there's, uh, you know, a, a swell in population that, from all the mushroom houses popping up or whatever, um, we should be able to react fairly quickly to it. Um, and that's, that's flexibility that a lot of school systems don't have, and it's flexibility that we didn't have back in the day. So it's, uh, it's awful nice to, to have, be, have worked i- in up to this point, so a lot of work from a lot of hard people, you know, so appreciate all that.
All right, let Jacob come up and talk about the timetable a little bit.
So the, the time, uh, Jacob McClellan with Bose McKinney and Evans. So the, um, the timetable should look like what you guys have been through before, um, because of your debt service levy rate and because of the size of the projects, um, it would be a controlled project, potentially subject to, um, referendum. And so what we would do in, in that timetable and what you guys have done in the past, if it's, if it still works for you all, is we've had, you have to hold two public hearings. So, um, we typically recommend that you hold those one week apart. I mean, you could do it one day apart, but, um, if you look at that timetable, and that's what we've done in the past, but we would start with the, uh, the public hearings, once we get kind of parameters in the list of the projects, um, we'd work with Stiefel to get notices out, and we've got to kind of put together, you know, tax impact and those notices and things like you all have probably seen in, in prior years. Um, but we would have, uh, if we stick to this timetable, the first preliminary determination hearing in, uh, July eighth, the second one at your kind of normal board meeting, and that's when we would put out, after, assuming everything gets adopted, we put out a notice, and there's thirty days when, uh, the lesser of five hundred property owners or five percent of registered voters can petition to have the referendum process apply. Um, I know your public, uh, your constituents have been pretty supportive, so you haven't had a lot of pushback on anything in the past, we kind of don't expect that. Um, but because of, that's a thirty-day period, we've got to kind of wait for that thirty-day period to run before we can do anything with the lease. And, um, this would be a, a lease bond through your building corporation, that's a thirty-day notice as well. So we're not really taking any action then if you stick with this timetable in August. We'd be back, um, for the hearing on the lease and, you know, presumably approval on the lease at your September meeting. Then there's a thirty-day period, um, that we have to put out a notice, because you would have been through the, uh, the preliminary determination process, there's not really a remonstrance, but we don't like to, there's, the statute's a little ambiguous, um, so we'd like to wait that thirty days, and that's typically what we do. And then we'd be back in October with, um, forms of bond documents. And then if you needed to issue something or you planned to issue something by the end of the year, we'd work with Stiefel and, um, and Matt and Jerry on timing. And again, um, you know, assuming we authorize kind of a, a very long list of needs, um, we'll put in authorizations for this to be, you know, multiple series, issued on multiple dates, um, multiple addendums to your lease to match up with those, um, just for maximum flexibility. And that way, if for some reason we, we jump over the seventy cents, you're, you're not kind of hamstrung by that and stuck waiting or, or trying to scramble to figure out something, you know, that you can do to kind of fulfill a need. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Early November seems like a fairly good time to spend or, or to sell bonds, is correct, before you get into the holidays when things get crazy.
Yeah, and it's, it's always kind of good to get through, you know, we've got you getting through. If you do that special meeting, we get you through without really rushing in October. And then if, you know, Stiefel says, hey, there's no reason to rush, you can sit on it, I mean, it, I, what I don't like is what, what clients that kind of do it last minute and then have something come up that's political or that's a, a big hurdle, it's kind of, the way you guys have always proceeded is to kind of take your time and.
Right.
That way, if something comes up, you're not rushed, so.
Clearly, we're not hitting the timeline that we've got here because we're not going to take any action this evening.
Uh, so the timeline that we have here, so just generally, um, since I've been working for you all, we, we've always kind of briefed the board before we started anything. So that, that June seventeenth, you know, I, I think it's just to kind of talk about potentially, we've got projects and you, you know, depending on what you guys decide, you'll have some notices that you'll see. And then at the next meeting, we'd have a, you know, potentially, if you guys are, if it works for you all, we'd have that special public hearing, we could kind of present on what the potential projects were and the parameters, and then you'd be taking action at the July fifteenth meeting.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would, would it be prudent to, if, if the ten twenty-eight would be by June twenty-third to, uh, have the board, uh, at least vote that we agree to start with the forty million dollars and that we use this timetable and authorize you to, uh, to do the ten twenty-eight hearing? To, to publish the notice for the ten twenty-eight hearing, should the board go ahead and just, uh, authorize that, just?
You, you can if you'd like, yeah, to, to kind of say, hey, please proceed with, you know, uh, getting, you know, formulating projects and parameters, and then we can kind of start the process, yeah.
So the parameters, the budget would be the forty million.
That would be the forty million, and then Stiefel will run kind of not to exceed parameters for us. And that's kind of tricky if we're doing potentially, you know, that, that might be a little bit, I don't, Matt can speak to it, but it might be a little bit higher than you're used to just to allow for flexibility and changes, you know, that might happen if you don't issue for, you know, something for two or three years, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize Stiefel and, uh, and, and counsel to take the necessary steps to publish the notice for the ten twenty-eight hearing, uh, and, uh, and, and set the maximum amount at forty million dollars.
You have a motion, you have a second.
I thought this was informational here, I don't see it, is this an act of it?
It, it is informational and we don't have to authorize the published, publication of the ten twenty-eight notice. I just feel better about it so that we've looked at it, we've been working on it.
But we're still going to, so we'll still publish it then?
And so this would allow us to publish it, correct?
You, you, you guys could.
Matt or Jerry could instruct me to publish, but I mean, that's probably good and then, and you guys will still. then, and you guys will still have to vote on it in July. It doesn't like lock you in if you do it.
Right.
It's just kind of affirmatively saying, hey, please proceed.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. So even though it's informational, I would like to go ahead and show that we are in support of this and that, at least moving forward to, and to keep things moving forward, and again, Matt or Jerry could have authorized the ten twenty-eight, I just like.
Without our, without our consent?
Yeah.
They could have did it without our consent?
Yeah, they didn't need us to do that, but I want them to know that we would like for them to.
I'll second.
You can second it. Anything further? Any question?
I just think everybody needs to know that this is
Right.
Just a first step, and, and nothing is set in stone, but
You guys will have multiple.
We can't take steps until we take a step.
You guys will have multiple public hearings and multiple chances to kind of weigh in on everything, so.
And we'll have a chance to look at thirty million also between now and then, see how it plays out. Okay.
Yeah. I think what you don't want is people say, well, they published that ten twenty-eight notice, did the board even vote on that?
But, and that's why we bring it to you guys, too.
That's what I was just, yeah.
That's why, that's why Matt and Jerry have me bring it to you guys, 'cause so that you don't see something in the paper and go, hey, nobody told us.
Right, right, yeah.
Right.
No, so it's, I, I just think it looks good that we're, we're showing that we're a team on this.
Right.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Matt and Jake, we really appreciate you guys coming down and making everything so clear, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Um.
Thank you, Jake.
I didn't want to do it necessarily at the beginning of the meeting because of, we had everybody here, and it was such a joyous time, but I would like to take a moment to, to pause and, and stop and remember Cindy Bentley and her family. It was a very tragic loss. The driver in the other car actually is someone that I'd had as a student at IBTAC.
Oh, my gosh.
So, I knew both.
She was, Jasmine was, Saint John was in the other car, and she was the administrative assistants at the proactive health clinic, so a lot of our folks know her.
Yeah, yeah, so, it, it is a, a very sad time for them and their families, and we just, you know, my prayers are with them, and, and that if we could just take a few moments of silence, I think we should. Um, so, no, we will go ahead, we have an informational item that is the revisions to policies forty-one sixty-two and eighty-five ten, and this would be the first reading. And Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so we, as you mentioned, we have two policies that we're presenting to you tonight on first reading, and then at the July board meeting, we'll give you the opportunity to approve those revisions. The first one, forty-one sixty-two, is the drug and alcohol testing of CDL holders and other employees who perform safety-sensitive functions. The policy is being revised to better align with the Indiana State Police flow chart that outlines protocol for when you do a drug test. We have, our buses are inspected on a regular basis, and at one of those inspections, the, the inspector said that, that our policy could be worded better in order to be much more aligned with their protocol. So, that's, that's the purpose of forty-one sixty-two. Eighty-five ten is being revised, the CHAMP's committee that kind of organizes and leads our corporation in areas of, of health and fitness. They felt like, once again, the language in policy eighty-five ten should be revised to better align with the USDA smart snacks in school nutrition standards. And so, we've revised those policies accordingly. Christine has reviewed them, and this is first reading, so once again, we'll ask you to vote on this in July.
Thank you. We, now we will look at administrator contract adjustments. Mr. Irwin?
So, this is for our preschool director. So, with this upcoming year, we'll be doubling the size of the preschool, we'll be adding in the addition of the daycare, and she will have the over, over, being overseeing the before and after care program, childcare program as well. It's much more aligned with the duties and the things that, that she is focused on throughout the day and throughout the year. And with this, what we're trying to do is continue just to, to create a mold of rhyme and reason as to how, and how we pay our administrators, and how that's in alignment with other administrative positions, and it being competitive as well. And so this brings this, the payment of our preschool director position in alignment with our AP positions at the elementary level as well. So, some, a little bit more of equal footing as far as the level of responsibilities that are there, so that brings this into alignment. So, it's an adjustment of this upcoming contract year, which would start July one through June thirty of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. So, it's just an adjustment of that second year. The contract has been reviewed by Christine prior to it coming to you.
I'm approval of the administrator contract adjustment.
I'll second.
You can second it? Any discussion?
She is gonna have more on her plate this year, no question.
Yeah, she is. She's been busy.
She's been doing an outstanding job, just getting prepared and, and planning for the opening of the new building. She is, she has been in on every detail and, and has been very meticulous in the way that she's planning and trying to get things set up and ready to go, so I applaud her for that.
Yeah, she's put in a lot of extra work this year.
Just need to recontract change, too.
So, it's still a two-hundred-day contract, same, again, it's brought into alignment with that of an AP for, for the elementary buildings.
Two hundred days, but she still works two hundred twenty probably. Right.
Yep.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next is to approve status quo of the year-round classified employee agreements. Again, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is a yearly piece, it's the status quo classified employee agreements for these, for these six individuals. It's something that we do every year, so those are one-year agreements, so it's just to make sure that, that we renew their agreements prior to them expiring, so that they're not walking into July on an expired contract. So, this is, again, reviewed yearly by Christine prior to your approval.
I move approval. A second.
You can second it? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve the PCS quote? Nope, policy analytics agreement. And Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this, we, the last time we worked with policy analytics was back in twenty twenty-one, and they did a tax-based study analysis for us, and so this is very similar in that way, but they're also gonna help us key in on some things that are very important with the changes as it relates to SEA one. So, again, having a firm understanding of our tax base and the direction that it's heading, as well as the impact of the homeowners credit, that's an immediate impact on our budgets, because it's gonna come off the top of our levy like a circuit breaker credit, and so they're gonna be able to give us much more accurate count as far as what to expect for that type of credit, so that as we plan for budgets, for cash flow projections, when we're making decisions about staffing, we have more accurate detailed information to make decisions off of. So, this is in alignment with the same reasons that we would do a demographic study, or we would do a facility study assessment, or all of those pieces. It brings good information to the board, they're one of the leader, they are the leader in this, in this, for around the state, they work with a lot of schools, and so this allows them to do it. It is a one-year agreement, so that after one year, if we feel like we don't need to continue to do it, that's fine, but this, this will help us get some of that information so that we're better prepared as we make decisions in, in the near term.
I'll move approval of the policy analytics agreement. I'll second.
You can second it? Any discussion?
And that fees an annual cost, correct?
Yeah, that is a cost of ten thousand five hundred dollars, and it can be paid for either from the operations fund, but I did check with Jacob McClellan from Bose, because it is helping us with our analysis as it relates to bonding and some of those other projects, we can include it in our costs for issuance, so that it doesn't come out of our operations fund, it saves us that appropriation and that cash in operations, which is how I would advise to do that.
And they give us more detailed information than Stiefel?
Yes, yeah, so it's kind of a layer. Stiefel was more so on that side of advising us on bonds, bond parameters, all of those pieces. Policy analytics is backend, giving us a lot of information as it relates to our own tax base and what the parameters are of that, as far as what to expect AV growth, all of those other things, which helps make Stiefel's information that much more accurate as it relates to giving you information about those parameters.
And they would be evaluating, for example, the TIF.
Yeah, so they can look and help us with evaluating some impact of the TIF and some of those other pieces, which again, is very appropriate for us at this time.
Sure, thank you.
Nothing further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve the PCS quote for the junior high school.
Yeah, so, we have been looking for some space to house student support for students if they're, you know, removed from the classroom, or they're waiting to see an administrator, or they're hanging out there for the day, working on work. Mr. Rensler gave up his office this year and moved to a different office, so that they had a space for that. And so, this would allow us to create some space that's not being well utilized at this point, which is in the teachers lounge, where a lot of teachers aren't using that right now. They, you know, would rather have a space where they can, you know, serve students, so it's putting a wall up in that space, cutting in a door, making sure all the, the appropriate HVAC, fire alarm strobe, all those things are there to help with that, and then also solving a secondary issue, which is we have no direct access to the back of the bleachers in the main gym at the junior high, so our maintenance and custodial staff is having to kind of shimmy their way to the back to try to get in there to service or clean back there, which is not ideal in, in any aspect. So, it takes care of that, we'll, they'll cut in a door and give direct access to the back of that for service and, and cleaning. So, the, we did put it out to three quoters, only two, two people quoted, the low quote was provided by PCS. The total all-in, if you take the alternates, which we would like to do, is fifty-six thousand one hundred and five dollars, and it would be funded through some remaining funds of a bond back in two thousand ten, which is an appropriate use of those funds, checked with Jacob McClellan as far as what were the allowable uses of those remaining funds, and that's something that he said is an allowable use, so we would take it from, from that account, which has more than enough money to cover that. And so, and also what you have in front of you is, I printed off, Christine wanted there to be like a standard AIA document, like a short-form document to go along with the quote, just because there was some renovation work going on in the building. So, we've been working with Ed Zerfus and PCS to, to get that written out. What I've given you is the latest version of that, so what I'm asking for is for you guys to approve the quote in the agreement pending satisfactory language, which I expect to have soon, so that they can get this work done during the summer, and hopefully have it ready before school year starts and that all of this is completed. So, asking for approve that pending satisfactory language, the quote in the corresponding agreement.
I'll second.
You can second it? Any discussion?
Just curiosity, how big a space are we talking about?
Um, I don't recall the total square footage off the top of my head, but if you know where the teachers lounge access area is to the junior high, you walk in and you look to the left, so kind of where that little hallway is, that wall would go along where that hallway is, so it'd still have that access hallway to get into the, to the media center in that place, but it would wall that off, and then there would be a door cut on the outside wall, that would be a direct access from the hallway
It's a fairly small.
Into that room. Yeah, it's not, it's not a
It's a little bit less than a classroom.
No, no, it's
Right, it's a closet.
And it's a much better utilization of that space than what it's being used for now. It's gonna be able to serve students, which is obviously a great thing.
Sure.
Matt, would you say when this work would be done?
It'd be done this summer, so hopefully, pending approval from you all, I'll be getting out that confirmation to them tomorrow, so that they can get it scheduled, because if not, if we had to wait till July, there's just no way that we would have the opportunity to get this work done. So, we're really gonna be pushing on them to get this completed and finished before next school year starts.
Does Mr. Sigal, this make sense? This, this is what you guys want, right?
Yeah, we're, we're really limited in office space, and given up an office to utilize it, as ISS right now is a short-term fix, and the long-term is something we really need, and for the number of teachers that utilize that space, we've, we've got another space in mind that we can use.
It's like a ten by ten, or?
I would say it's a sixteen by sixteen, maybe sixteen by twenty, something like that. It's not a full classroom, but it's, it's big enough.
Would that be for an school suspension?
Yeah, and, and it's, I mean, right now, we're utilizing a space where we can only fit three students, and four students maybe, or they're sitting on top of each other, which, they're down there, they don't need to be sitting on top of each other anyway.
Right. But the goal is not to have it, period. That's the goal, we don't want
The goal is, we don't want
Yeah, we don't, we just need a, we just need a, we just need a space and put
That was a trick question.
That was, yeah, it was a kind of a trap question, yeah, so, all right.
This space is a lot more practical for what we need.
Okay, all right. Okay, did we have a motion?
Yes.
Was it contingent on the review by legal? Okay.
This is a monitored room, too. Somebody's gonna be in there.
There's a staff member that monitors.
All right, all right.
We shut the door, we'll
All right, all right, perfect. Put copies of Lord of the Flies in there.
Okay, there's nothing else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now, we look at the renewal of the IU Health Athletic Trainer Agreement. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so, last year was the first year that we had this agreement in place. This is a continuation of that agreement, obviously, but this is for a multi-year agreement. So, not a whole lot of changes to the structure of the agreement. The initial price for this year is the exact same as what it was last year, but what they did was put a three percent escalator in it for each year, just for to keep up with the cost of living and to keep that person's salary and benefits moving. Everything else is pretty close to the same, they made some slight tweaks to the marketing pieces that they would like in exchange for the, for the sharing of costs for an athletic trainer, looked into those some more. I don't think that it's gonna pose an issue to the school, it's not really any different than what we're doing now, and so this is just a partnership that we have with IU, where they're helping to share in the cost of what it is to provide an athletic trainer to our, to our teams. And so, at this point, we, we're very happy with where we're at with this, so I'm recommending your approval of, of this renewal.
I'll move approval.
A second.
And the cost of it?
Forty-three thousand dollars, and then next year it will go up by three percent in each year thereafter.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, permission to create the position of a certified occupational therapy assistant?
Yes, so, in the past, we have had a contract with an outside company to provide the services of a certified occupational therapist assistant. We feel like we could possibly save the corporation some money by hiring this person directly, and so in order to do that, we have to create this position, and so we recommend your approval of that tonight.
I'll move approval of the creation of the position.
I'll second.
You can second it? Any discussion?
Just curiosity, what, what do you, what do you anticipate that the cost would be for this person?
Matt, do you know that?
We probably set the hourly rate somewhere in the mid twenties as far as what the going rate is, we're gonna continue to kind of look at what the analysis of what the going rate is for that. If we had to work with a contracting company, the markup on that is pretty extreme, and so we think that if we're able to find the right person, this would be a much better service to the kids and to the school corporation on every side of the spectrum.
Thank you. This could be reimbursed, some, maybe some Medicaid reimbursement?
Yeah, I have to double-check on, on that, on that, but I believe so. I think there's probably a little bit different reimbursement rates as it relates to different levels of professionals and licensing, but that would be something that, if, if we're able to reimburse, we'll continue to do that, just like we bill Medicaid services for those that are eligible to, to bill.
So they'll get benefits, too?
This is going to be a part-time position.
Oh, part-time, part-time. All right, perfect.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Perfect. And next would be the creation of a position for a speech-language pathologist assistant.
Yes. So the purpose of this new position would really be to support our SLPs. Kara Glasscock, who serves EPS, and Justin Rust, who, who serves at the Edward Early Childhood Center. They've been doing a fantastic job trying to keep up with the growing demands, growing caseload. And so we feel though, in order to support them, it would be really beneficial for the corporation to create this speech and language pathologist assistant position so we can help take a little bit of the caseload off of these two fine educators.
Last year, we had had a, the board had approved an agreement for an outside firm to provide that. And we can, we can get a lot more hours out of someone, a lot more service to kids for a lot cheaper cost if we're able to hire them directly rather than paying all the markup fees and get more time. So the idea is that it would be a part-time position as a, and it would even then be a step up in some of the services and some of the help that we're able to provide our SLPs.
I move approval of creation of the...
A second.
Good. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration of the agreement for a memorandum of understanding with the South Central Community Action Program Head Start. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so you guys saw Jennifer Anderson's memo on this. This is something that as a renewal, we do it every two years. There's been no changes from the last MOU. It was reviewed by Jessica Heiser, who's a special education attorney that we use through Imprint Legal Group. And again, it just makes sure that there's coordination of services for the students that need them, from early intervention services, Part C, to preschool special education services, Part B, if eligible, and our at Head Start.
I'll move approval.
I'll say again.
Good. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve the 2020, 2025, 2026 Classified Handbook. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so I put a, just a one pager there in front of you because there was one adjustment I needed to make. I had gotten a last-minute feedback from one of our directors on a question that I felt like this was something. So if you look at the page that's there in front of you, at the bottom, the second piece that's in red, it says days to be used at the discretion of department supervisors or superintendent. So we had added in the three e-learning pay days for transportation and nutrition services staff. That was to make sure that some of our employees who don't have an opportunity to make up work when we are out of school have a protection to their paycheck. What this is, is to make sure that when we have a flex day and it's not bad weather, if there's work for them to do, then obviously we're going to have them come in and do that work, whether it's training or being, you know, better, you know, better at the, some of the surfaces that we need for them to work on. And so that's something that's just saying, hey, there is that flexibility. It's a clarification of what we're already doing. But again, one of the goals every year when we review this is to say, is there something that we need to clarify? And also is there something that we need to change? And so this would be something that's just a clarification of how we already administer that as well. But again, the sole purpose of it's there is to protect that. So if they're not used on flex day, and say we have a really bad winter and we have to take several e-learning days, those three e-learning days that we're allowed to use asynchronously, it protects the paycheck of those employees who don't have much of an opportunity to make up work when we continue to be outside of school. So the other changes that were in the Classified Handbook, again, I put those in red. That was reviewed by Christine. I put those in red just so you didn't have to re, every, you know, every piece of that. But it kind of points you to these are the major changes, or these are the things that are changing from one year to the next. But this is something that you review multiple times a year as it relates to the handbook. So asking for your approval of that.
I'll move approval.
I second.
Good. Seconded. Any discussion?
Quick question on the, on the preschool secretary. We, that was a, we're moving him to the school secretary category now, right?
Yeah, she was transferred over to the school secretary scale. Again, just a...
Because we nix it.
Yeah, so, yeah. So there was no point to have it on there anymore because with the creation of the new building, you're doubling the size, daycare, all the things that are going on there, there's a little bit more alignment with that of...
Makes sense.
And there's not the other, you know, assistants there in the office. So bringing some of those things into alignment, again, just making adjustments to the handbook over time as it, as it makes sense, as things continue to evolve from school year to school year.
Yeah. Appreciate you cleaning that up.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve the 2025, 2026 Before and After Care Handbook. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so bringing this to you because, again, with the change in the preschool, again, adding more opportunity for kids to have before and after care if they're in the preschool. And so this was something we've made several changes to. It felt like it was something that we needed to start bringing to you each year to review. The rates that are in the back end of it is something that you guys have already reviewed earlier in the year, just because we need to set those rates earlier as we are releasing information to families about that are looking into preschool, or that are getting ready for kindergarten roundup, or whatever that might be. So some of that stuff is, some things that you've already seen before. But with some of these changes, felt like it was necessary to start to bring that to you. And again, this program will be under the direction of Heather Kenzick. She'll oversee the, the before and after care director. She'll still obviously work with the EPS and EIS administration to coordinate those services in those buildings. But she'll help with making sure that things are billing and all those other pieces are, are running the way that they should. So with that, asking for your approval on the before and after care handbook.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve the 2025, 2026 Student Parent Handbooks. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so I was just thinking about this, that the, the handbooks are probably the most, one of the most valuable documents that we have because it's such an effective way to communicate with parents and provide them with valuable information on procedures and other information that they need to know as parents. And so if you look at our handbooks, they're very well done. Our principals put a lot of time and energy into that. And every year they're, you kind of evaluate and think past, on the past school year, and different things that have come up. And then the principals think, well, we could better word that. And so they make revisions to the handbook. Or there might be new laws that the state legislators have provided us. And so we include those changes in the handbooks. We run those all by Christine. And she just loves that time of the year when she could look at the, all the handbooks. And she's very, she does a very good job at that. And I really appreciate that. So we recommend your approval.
The Student Parent Handbooks.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve Power School Section 504 Software Program Contract. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this brings into alignment, the state moved to Power School being the provider of the new IEP platform as well. So it brings into alignment our, our Section 504 plans and the IEP program being on the same platform, which makes it a lot easier for staff to make sure that we're administering the, the pieces that we need to for the students that get those services. So it was reviewed by Ferguson Law. There was one change that needed to be made to it as it related to the auto renewal. That change has been made. So the agreement that you will, that you will be able to sign or approve at this point, Dr. Sanders will sign after, you know, pending your approval. It does have the auto renewal out of it, which is what Christine wanted to be out of it. They agreed to that change. So at this point, everything's good to go. So asking for your approval of that, please.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Is this a set-price contract, or is it?
So, yeah, so, yeah. So each year, there's, there's a set price. So year, year one, 25 to 26 is, is $5,822.50. Year two is $1,640.35. And then the years after, it has those in there as far as what those prices are. And then it has the subscription pieces that are in it. And, and it has the different layers in it as far as like products, services, training services. Training is $855. So it lays out the different pieces that are in it.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we're to our friendly superintendent's report.
You know, I just love this report tonight because it, so many times when I'm out and about, sometimes the public thinks that school corporations shut down during the summer. And, and I just wanted to give a report tonight to, to demonstrate that really our campus never sleeps. It's maybe moratorium week, it slows down a little bit. But so our wonderful nutrition department is always on the move. As you know, they're providing free breakfast and lunch to students participating in summer school. We have the summer feeding program, which provides individual breakfast and lunch meals, which goes from May 28th through July 25th. And so there's different pickup points that the community can go to to get those individual lunches. And one of those would be our food truck, that they could go to a location and, and utilize our food truck for those individual meals. This summer, we, we've added something, and that's the summer meal pickup. So a family can pick up a meal for a week, five breakfasts, five lunch meals, and a gallon of milk per child. And so we, that goes from June 4th through July 23rd. And it's a drive-through service. It's behind EPS. And I think that's pretty cool that we serve our community in that way. As we mentioned, summer school is wrapping up this week for EPS, EIS, and the high school. We've had 55 students at the primary level, 34 at the intermediate, and approximately 60 students at the high school. The junior high does a jump start program. And so that'll be July 21st through the 31st. And then there's tons of extracurricular activities. I just listed all the, the camps that provide, that are provided for our elementary students from boys' basketball to football, soccer, tennis, volleyball. The girls' basketball will have a camp in the fall. And those, it's just really cool to go up and look into our facilities, our, our football complex, and see these future Mustangs learning their respective sports. And something I don't know, maybe Larry knows different, but I've, Dirk, but I've never remembered us having a summer performance before.
We have.
We have. Sixth musical, the teen edition, will be June 26th and 27th at 7:00, or the 28th at 2:00 in the high school auditorium. And of course, you'll see all of our fall sports athletes around campus and the band practicing here at the student parking lot. And then finally, a really exciting week. And this is, this happens because of our dedicated teachers. But we have a camp invention at EPS. It's a STEM-focused summer camp. It'll be June 23rd through the 26th. And it goes from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. every day that week. And so pretty cool to be around campus in the summer.
Okay. There was no RBVEA representative here this evening, so we'll go to board member comments. We'll start with Mrs. Jacobs.
Well, I'm happy about all the things that are just, you know, all the progression that we're going through as a corporation. It's amazing to see all these pieces come together. And I'm very excited to see how the, the new school takes off this fall. It'll be exciting to see all the littles come in and, and watch them grow. I'm sorry, this is going to be difficult. I'm asking everybody to please cue Cindy Bentley's family. Very close to their hearts. I've known Cindy for a lot of years. And it's going to be difficult. And I have her in our corporation. We need to make sure we're rallying around the staff that have worked with her for so many years because they're hurting. And her grandchildren are RBB students. So we need to make sure that we're rallying around them and supporting them. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, just continued prayers for, for that family and for the community to wrap their arms around the Bentley family and help them through this time. And also for the family in Nohin County that was affected as well. So appreciate all the information tonight and good meeting.
If I can get it out. Thank you, Matt, for all your work you've done for us and Jerry. Appreciate your leadership so much. And I see Mrs. Whitaker out there. Is this our last time we'll see you at a board member meeting? Well, I was, I was there. I was there when we hired you, and I'm there now. You're leaving. So good luck and I sure enjoyed watching your career. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I had two Cindy's children in class. And Logan was on one of my boys' Little League team. So I've known, known the family for a long time. And it was, it's a hard load to bear. Graduation once again was, as you have often said, it's the, it's our favorite time of the year, seeing what our students have accomplished. And this was a terrific class. And I'm, I'm so proud of the, of Class 25. And I'm looking forward to Class 26. So I'll just leave you there.
Nice job, Drew.
Yeah.
Have a good team.
I would just like to have one comment, and that is to thank Mrs. Whitaker for all her years of service here. We've talked and talked a lot about things. And you've planted a lot of seeds in my brain that have sprung up around this place. And, and so, you know, I always attribute the preschool to being your vision that you, you brought to us. So I really appreciate you and, and all your years of service. And we're definitely going to miss you. This meeting's adjourned.